I'd like to call this meeting of September 19th to order. Approval of the minutes, I need a motion to...
Slow move.
Table move to our next meeting.
Table of the meeting, yep.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, three to zero. With the chairman's update. I did get a phone call from our building inspectors this week on 860. They're looking to add some outdoor charging stations. I told them that they would have to come back in and present it to the board. It's a total of 21 spaces in three buildings, I believe. And that big makes them dedicated spaces, so I don't know, we'd have to look at...
Where?
At 860.
At 860?
Yeah.
And how many?
It appears to be 21 at this time. From what I seen, it was seven electric charges per building. That makes 21 spaces, I don't know what's that gonna do for their normal parking counts, so that'll have to be researched.
Okay.
They were taken out of the garage, I believe, although it's not on the plans that they were ever in the garage. So, that'll be coming before us. Consulting engineer, we think we'll pass on that one. Nancy, do we have any new submissions, any planned subdivisions?
No.
We do not. Okay. Move on that one. I'd like to get a motion to move the A and R ahead of the hearing for bowl engineering.
Slow move.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, three to zero. There's no time, so we can start right then. So, what I'll do is I'd like to have who's ever here present us the, what is this A and R? So Daisy, if you will come to the podium, state your name, please.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Isabel Ponte. I'm here on behalf of the owner of the land. He hires me as architect. So, the goal is to, like I said, he owns 10 Daisy as well, which is completely under wetlands. The goal is to add a residence on the property. Considering that 11 Daisy is pretty big square footage wise, we were recommended to submit an A and R, split in the land into two lots. With the proposed plan that you see there. So, with Daisy Avenue does narrow in front of 10 Daisy, we could propose to extend the 28.4 width all the way down.
Well, this says a 15 foot right of way.
I'm sorry?
On the plan, it calls it to be a 15 foot right of way.
Right.
So, you would...
We could extend the 28.4 Daisy Avenue width all the way through. Like I said, the owner owns 10 Daisy.
Okay.
So, that's where the 15 right of way is in front of.
Okay.
To provide the required access road to the two proposed lots at the back.
Already?
So, right now, currently, this is one lot where 11 is, where this home is now?
That's right, that's one lot.
And that, and you're looking to subdivide it?
We're look, yes.
So, that's a little different.
Is that where lot two was on the plan?
That's right, so lot one is where the, would include the existing residence, and then lot two would be the second new lot.
Very good, I understand.
We have a wetlands consultant as well, that we've done some preliminary studies with the wetlands and the buffers, where if we could fit, I think it's roughly a 1,500 footprint single-family home, compliant with zoning, the dimensional setbacks and all of that. It's not shown on the plan, because, you know, this is just for the subdivision of the lots, but we've done that preliminary analysis.
So, who owns the land right out front?
Right up front.
Number 10?
No, on the right-hand side of number 10, well, if you're looking at the left-hand side. But facing you right now, it says Daisy Ave, it has someone's name there, and a book and a page. There also is a 15-foot sew easement that runs through the property.
The name, the owner is on there.
Right.
That's the owner's name, right under where it says NF.
Right.
That's the owner.
So, they don't have, at that point, they would have to have a land taking to stretch that to 28 feet. If you see what I'm saying?
I do, yep. Right where the 15 drain easement, you're saying?
Good.
You see where the funnel is right there?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think this is a little more than just a simple A and R.
No, it is, it's...
Maybe if you do a site visit, so we can see...
You wanna make a motion? So, I think what we should do is probably come out to the site.
Mm-hmm.
Have someone walk us through this to understand it. Pretty confusing the way it's laid up, because this cul-de-sac is not there?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah. And some of the, between the surveyor and the recorded circle, there's some overlapping that is confusing even for me. That's why, when I asked the surveyor, why were we showing the cul-de-sac, they told me they had to show it, because it was recorded, but I agree.
Even the division of the sub, like you're saying, this is gonna be subdivided, this would be lot one, this would be lot two, it looks like part of the current structure that's there now is on both of those.
No, there's an existing concrete foundation, is that why you're looking at it?
So, in the hatch here, you're on page two?
Yeah.
I think that's what she's talking about?
Right here, yeah, it looks like that.
So, lot...
The house in the deck and...
Lot two follows that paved way. So, the hatch there...
Oh, okay, that dock line, okay.
That's right.
Okay, okay.
So, there's some dimensions and the...
Okay.
So, that would be the extensive lot two.
And they would then use the private way as their frontage?
That's right.
Okay.
That's not possible. John?
No, I'm just, I'm asking, that's why I wanna...
No, I'm looking at the requirements.
Yep.
On the roadway. Has to be at least 40 feet wide and a reasonable horizontal alignment. Does the existing horizontal and vertical alignment of the roadway provide safe visibility? You go in that roadway, as I just did, that roadway is not aligned with Daisy, it's a side street, it's a side portion off of Daisy.
It's a right way off of Daisy, yeah, you see that?
Ten Daisy Ave.
Yep.
Is it constructed to a minimum of 24 feet? 24 feet paved with adequate...
Well, she said that, Bob, lot 10 is owned by the same owner as lot 11. So, he could give up frontage to make that come to 24 feet?
Lot 11 being...
The bottom of your plan? Lot 10 and lot 11.
What I'm trying to tell you is that lot 11 doesn't have frontage. This obviously was built before, you know, approval not required, was not required. Okay, because it's a house at the end of the road right now.
Well, that says here on the plan, Bob, he's got 127.7 feet to the back, what he's calling a garden, shot wall.
Which plan you look at?
If you look at the hatch section of the second page, Bob.
By the way, there was a three-page, this three pages this, yeah, three pages.
Just two pages.
And did somebody build in a cul-de-sac?
Uh, they haven't done anything over there yet, that's why you couldn't find it.
I think there's, isn't there one house there? It's not really, there's one, like, two family...
That's right, so...
It's currently a two-family house.
I'm just saying.
Oh, what lot?
Five Daisy is built, so there's a satellite plan that I printed too.
I know there's no cul-de-sac, but I think there's a house, there's a two-family house right here, right?
On Five Daisy, yes.
Five Daisy, this is Five Daisy, right?
Yeah.
Okay, see the, see this here, the right of way?
No, that's Two Daisy.
See the, see the right of way?
On the other side, that's right.
This is Daisy, right here. See the right of way? It runs parallel to Daisy, up here, Daisy ends at that line right there.
No, there's a house.
I know there's a house, but I'm trying to tell you the house is served only by this paved driveway.
Right, right.
So...
You can't use a paved driveway, and doesn't meet the requirements of frontage for that particular lot. This is a subdivision.
Well, that's what I said, if you're subdividing the land, it's...
No, it's a subdivision.
It then becomes a subdivision if they divide the way that they want to do it.
It can be...
Currently, it's not a subdivision.
We really shouldn't divide it until they come through with a subdivision plan. If that lot, the 25,000-foot lot, is for sale, then that lot should be serviced as part of a subdivision.
With a public way, you're saying with an actual public way?
Yes.
Understand.
I mean...
I understand what you're saying. The only thing is, if you push it back, is it gonna give the house that's there the right setback and the right frontage?
It's like, if you bring, if they, if they were to continue that road down, you'd have enough frontage, it's just a pretty big...
You're gonna pull that back towards the house.
Yeah, you'd have to continue the road.
So, you're gonna make that 10, 10, 12 feet wider than what it is. Towards the house, see this, Jeanie?
Yeah.
See this house? Right here is where that bottleneck is.
Where are you, right here?
Yep. You pull that back 10, 12 feet, this house here won't have the proper frontage.
This one?
It won't have the setback frontage.
Oh, setback, yeah, but it would still have, like, it would have frontage, you just not the setbacks.
By making the roadway, you're gonna create a problem. I don't know who owns that house? Is that owned by the...
You're talking about Five Daisy, right, the first one?
No.
No, you're talking about 10.
I'm talking about 10 Daisy, where the house exists.
He owns it, the same guy owns it.
Same guy owns it.
Yes.
But you understand what I'm saying? If you pull the road back right here, right where this bottleneck is...
Yeah, sure. So, but what is the...
So, here's the bottleneck right here, correct?
Uh, no, it starts here.
Right here?
Yeah, so that's...
So, it starts, it starts, the bottleneck starts right here on this lot, I mean, here's the bottleneck. This is the house that's on lot number 10.
No, there's no, this is 10. 10 is under wetlands, there's no house. So, the bottleneck starts here.
Well, according to...
Right after six?
Uh, right after six.
Nope.
At the end of six, right, you have a little bit of a bottleneck at six, this is six.
This is, we just referred to as having to have a land taking.
Yeah, that's why you had...
To make that wide.
You had, uh...
Then whose lot is this, is this the same?
That's the same owner, yep.
Same owner here?
That's right.
Okay, so there's a house on lot five, but there's no, there's no, a house on lot 10?
No, that's completely under wetlands.
Okay.
I mean, he...
This is why it's probably best that we have a watch.
Yeah. And see how it's recorded with, obviously, this is not there, but the way that they show Daisy Avenue like this, it's, it's not how the surveyor is showing it, so...
This is why it's, it's very difficult to decipher actually what's going on here.
So, the public, the public way is 28 feet four, so that's what you're saying, you'd, they would be willing to bring it to the 28 four to match that?
That's right.
Because I was thinking, I didn't know what you, where you were getting your numbers, because a regular street is 40 feet, so I was like, but now I see it. So, you'd be bringing it to match it?
Extending this, that's right.
Okay, and that, that, that 28, 28 four goes to pretty much right here, right?
Right there, yep.
And then this is where it's...
The bottleneck starts, yeah. And then I think it becomes 15.
Making that bigger doesn't affect any homes, because there aren't any. But it's wetland, so that might be an issue with conservation, I think conservation's gonna have to be involved.
Okay.
Have you, have you guys filed with conservation?
We have not, we were waiting to see what was, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I think it's, there's definitely more than just a simple A and R.
Okay.
But we don't, you know, we can, we can start with, I think, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like me to make a motion to do a site visit?
Please.
We can start there. Site visit?
Yes, because, by the way, Google map is wrong. Either that or the fellow who drew this up is wrong. One of the other...
I'm gonna say Google map is not wrong.
I would say, I would say it shows...
That's why I brought the satellite, because I was confused, and I tried to understand it with the surveyor, and they tell me this is how it is, and I'm...
I had a friend that lived at five, so I'm familiar with that, I never knew it went beyond that.
Mr. Chairman, this is a paved driveway, according to this plan, that is parked, it runs along parallel, a short distance towards the end of Daisy Drive, and then it goes into the property. But that street, date, no, it's Daisy, is really off to where, if you look at the local map...
Yep.
Daisy really ends where there's a car parked in the driveway down there.
I get that.
And it comes through, it comes through where that, all those trees and the bushes and everything else are.
Right.
Okay?
That's what I was saying.
But Daisy doesn't come through.
If that, if they continue it through, then he won't have the proper frontage for his house.
He can make it.
Oh, he, yeah, but not on this plan, you can't make it.
But, but are you still talking about six?
No, we're talking this, this area right here. This is where the, where the private way ends right here, or the driveway. This becomes his driveway in his property, so you would have to continue this through, and he would have to give this up, his property, to make the roadway 24 feet. And if he does that, he won't have the setback in that corner, and he won't have, you could, you could recreate it, but I don't know what you'd wind up with the, if the proper square footage of the lot.
So, we need, we need 100 of frontage, right?
You need 100 feet of frontage.
So, we, we might not need to bring Daisy Avenue all the way to the existing residence, right? As long as we meet, okay.
You could put the driveway just at, at the property line on, of lot two.
Right.
And that's, and...
And access it.
Correct, this is what I'm saying, this plan...
No, not, I mean, what we've been talking, seems like there's more stuff that needs to happen.
Now, make a suggestion.
Sure.
At the end of Daisy, right here, where that's, where lot two is...
Yep.
Make a cul-de-sac in there, just throw a cul-de-sac in there.
It's all wetlands.
You can still have a cul-de-sac in the way.
You can, if it's allowed by the...
But you can't use the whole thing.
Right.
But it can provide frontage.
Correct.
On that.
So, so it's probably best if the surveyor comes back out and stakes it, shows us the end of Daisy, the way it exists on the deep, it shows, it shows us maybe with a different colored ribbon, where this frontage of this lot is, and where the frontage of this lot is, so that we can determine...
Okay.
What's what. That, that's, that would be the start. Then, then, if that's the case, you would have to go back, go to wetlands, and what Mr. Long is saying...
Conservation Commission.
Allow a cul-de-sac to go in at that point.
Because then you'd have more, uh...
Right at the end of Daisy...
Right, if you put the cul-de-sac in, he's gonna give up some land, and this, on this lot number two, as well as giving up some land on lot number one.
Yep.
He would have to surrender that to make the cul-de-sac.
So, the wetlands are, are shown in the plan with the little flags, if you can see it, there's like a line.
Yes.
Right at the edge of the, the end of the funnels, or 15 right of way.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we can actually maybe push it further and do the, as the member was suggesting, the cul-de-sac without hitting wetlands. I mean, we're gonna be within the 50-foot buffer, but...
So, this lot, number two, also has wetlands on it?
It does, yeah.
So, will you have the proper, to go through all this, will you have the proper setbacks to put a house on there?
We, we've done the preliminary study with a wetlands consultant, yes. So, staying outside of the 50-foot buffer from the wetlands, keeping 15 feet from, for the setbacks, we were able to fit a 1,500 footprint on it with the small driveway, yes.
Okay.
I was gonna say, you can do it just by changing the lot on this one, on, on lot 11. Give me where the driveway is, you can still keep the driveway.
Yeah.
But you can change a lot line on two and one, if you put a cul-de-sac in there.
Right there at the property line, yep.
The driveways would come off of the cul-de-sac.
That's correct.
Daisy would suffice as the finished road.
Right, they're 24 feet.
And you wouldn't have to have all these other situations.
The only thing I brought to our attention, Bob, is the flagged areas where the cul-de-sac would go would have to be approved by...
Conservation.
Conservation Commission.
Well, if, yeah, well, if they're not gonna go, if they use driveways off of the cul-de-sac. This cul-de-sac is used for frontage, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so if you bring a driveway, I mean, there's already a driveway there.
For this house.
Well, I mean, there's already, I'm sorry.
That's what it means.
There's already Daisy, which is paved.
Right.
Okay? So, from that point on, it depends on where, if you put this cul-de-sac right at the end of Daisy, it depends on where you would bring your driveway into the, to the two lots. One lot would be fine, because you already have a lot 11, you already have the driveway there.
Yeah, I get that.
The concrete foundation that's there right now, is this the foundation for...
No, so it's not compliant with setbacks for the corner, so we would take the existing foundation out and build a new foundation with...
Was that the idea, though, to build the house there?
It is, it's, it's on that corner, it just needs to shift a little bit, but that would be the location. With the 50-foot, so 50-foot buffer off of the wetlands line, and then staying within the 15 feet. I don't know if you're able to, to read, but that existing concrete foundation, the dimension to the property line at the back is 8.5, so that's where we're non-compliant with the setback.
What else is on the zoning classifications?
Well, let's, let's, let's have him stake it out. Stake the lot out, stake, stake out.
The right of way.
The right of way, show us where the funnel is gonna be.
Yep.
If you can start the cul-de-sac at the property, stretch it through the two properties.
10 and 11.
Any frontage. But we can authorize you to do that until you get it approved by the Wetlands Commission.
Okay, Conservation Commission?
Yes.
So, would that be providing survey plans, well, after the site visit with the stakes, then we'll provide...
The change would have to be documented.
Okay.
Um...
And submitted to them.
So, the drawing would now not be in effect if you, if you did all that.
Mm-hmm.
It shows what exists at current, and then what you're trying to do.
Red line draw, red line...
Yeah, well, the A and I don't think it could be red lined, it's gotta go to the registry of deeds.
Needs to be recorded, I understand. It, I mean...
But if you did a red line drawing as, as a third page, just to show you what we're gonna do, that would be suffice.
Okay.
If they had that. So, can I get a motion from a board member?
Do they, excuse me for one second, do they need to file for a subdivision frontage too, is this more, because you have to...
Subdivision is, if I'm correct, Bob, it's, uh, three lots, two lots doesn't suffice the subdivision.
I, I don't know the number, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
Because if you build off a cul-de-sac, which gives you the required frontage, depending on how large your cul-de-sac, the cul-de-sac, though, does fall within that domain.
Yep.
As far as the, with it, but we can, I do believe that it's possible, and we'd have to check out with council to give a waiver on the circumference of the, of the...
Well, that, we would need the circumference for emergency apparatus down there.
Exactly.
That's the same thing.
So, they can turn, get in there and turn around.
That's correct.
It's a pretty open space, though, and once you get down to where the house is, there's a huge field on the left-hand side, once you clear the trees and all that stuff...
Yep.
On the driveway. And the other one looks like it's fairly clear, too, that there is a house on another street, butts at lot two.
Are you walking around in a doc down there?
Hi?
You down in a doc? Did you just come from there when you came to the meeting?
Huh? I drove over there, I took a look around. You know, the eyes of a field, yeah.
All right, so, um, you want a motion to...
Do a site visit?
Site visit?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Okay, motion.
We would have to wait for you to tell us when you're ready for that site visit, so...
After it's taken out.
Okay, you can just reach out to Nancy.
You could, you could contact Nancy, okay?
And then we'll, we'll schedule it.
Do you by any chance know what the emergency vehicle circumference is?
The radius?
Yes, that you use for...
By the truck.
I don't have it right in front of me, we do have it, though.
By the time we have a site visit, we can give you the radius.
Very good, okay, let's do that.
We gotta look at one of these books I have.
You'd have to get it cleared, not at this particular moment, but you'd have to get it cleared with, with the fire department anyway.
Yeah. Understood, thank you.
We just need to see what the site currently looks like now, and have an idea.
Of the plan.
You know, the topography and everything else you have over there.
Got it.
Also, I would suggest that you get a copy of pages...
Well, if you do a cul-de-sac, you'll have a circle, you can turn right around in a circle, that won't be an issue.
That you get a copy of pages six and seven from our rules and regulations.
For the subdivisions?
On the subdivision two.
I have that.
Nancy has them.
I, I have it, it's, it's section 3A for the A and R.
You make me take this thing apart. 3, it's, yeah, 3A, you're right, 3A, page six and page seven.
Very good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We'll pull it to here in front of you.
By the way, let's all keep in mind the Patriots are playing tonight.
We're doing good, Bob.
Yeah? How did I know that? What time?
You're on, you're on Fox channel?
Eight, three.
8:06?
Nine o'clock.
I don't know, he's not real, he'll be 8:15.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna guess that that's gonna motivate you to move things along.
Well, let's put it this way, we'll make one motion out of both to turn down the bank and knock it off.
I'll make a motion to pass the bank.
I strategically plan when we file applications, so they're around scoring them.
These moods are getting better to get out of here, too. One quick question before this, we start?
Yeah.
Did you get anything from...
Yes.
You did?
He's good with them.
Good.
Yeah, I have, I have a portion of beliefs that includes signatures.
The application, I saw the, we have the application, a copy of it. It does give them the name, but doesn't talk about who they're gonna lease it from.
Yep, yeah, I have a document that says, I have a...
Did you tell Jeanie we waited for her the other night?
Yeah. I thought maybe she'd have curly locks, you know?
Good.
Okay. This is also a public hearing, anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor against at the time, you can recall to come up. We have the applicant here to present to us exactly what is being proposed. Nick, if you would like to run, run the view through it.
Yeah, absolutely, so, I know I've given sort of the overview of the project a handful times, but just to reiterate, this is 156, 180 Main Street, so floor and decor and stop and shop is up here, which is Plan West, Route 1, Route 1 runs along the Plan South, here's the Buffalo Wild Wings and the Convenient MD. We're proposing a 3,200 square foot Chase Bank with a drive-through ATM. Just to reiterate, it's, it's not a drive-through window, so there's no teller window associated with it, it's strictly an ATM, and we have gotten a special permit with the Select Board for that use. Adjacent to the drive-through ATM lane, we're providing a full bypass lane. That's just sort of a high-level overview of kind of the proposed conditions here, and just to sort of give everyone a background of what we've done since we were last in front of the board, which was about a month ago, we have received follow-up comments from Beta, which we have responded to within the last day or so. I believe we've addressed all their comments, but I understand we have a Beta representative, so I won't, I won't speak for them. Additionally, I met with Bob and John on site yesterday, just to sort of look at the layout of things. We discussed a few additional things, one of which being, and Bob had a specific comment about some additional traffic control features, sort of in this northeasterly drive aisle, which I agree with, so, and this plan has not been formally submitted to the board, just because we really just made these updates this morning, but I figured I would, I would share it with you guys, so, as we discussed, Bob, and I know it's, it's tough, and I actually brought some, some printouts, if you want, if you want a hard copy of your own, but we did add a solid, solid yellow line in between these spaces, sort of 12 feet wide on each, each driveline. We added some additional stop controls, so some stop bars and stop signs, just to better sort of control that, that intersection, because it is, it is problematic. We added some additional striped pavement arrows, just to kind of further delineate lanes of travel, and down here, we also added additional stop bars and stop signs.
What's a stop bar?
Just the painted. Just the painted.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
White bar on the ground.
Alright. Pitching like.
Yeah. Um, an additional comment that we heard yesterday, and we've, we've heard it a handful of times throughout this hearing process, is just something in writing between the landlord and Chase, just kind of, um, ensuring the board that there is a lease to be, um, executed, and I do have a printout of that document. Um, I can scan it in and send you guys a PDF if, if that's easiest, or I can just kind of leave this with you guys here tonight.
Review, let the board just take a quick review of that, Nick, and then we can leave it with Nancy.
Yep.
She'll put it in the file.
Thank you. Yeah, the landlord or the property owner who's, uh, grossman, they signed the, the back of the, of the documents of the last page.
Nick, the, um, I wasn't here at the last meeting, but, um, John had said you guys decided to take the dumpster, I know the dumpster enclosure was a dumpster out, and they'll just do pickups?
Yeah, so the trash enclosure's been completely removed from, from the scope of this project. And to your point, it's just gonna be sort of typical, um, trash pickup, they don't, these banks don't generate, um, a ton of trash, so a lot of the times, they elect not to even include the trash enclosure, so.
Most of the paper.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, so, they were comfortable with, with removing that entirely.
Looks good.
Nick, could you explain the, the island situation, 'cause I don't think that was on the original design?
This one up here?
That's correct.
Yeah, so, it wasn't on the original plan submitted, but the plan presented at the last planning board hearing was. So, this island has always been, um, I guess this radius year has always been, so there's always been a landscaped portion in this area, but we actually received a comment from Beta regarding the drive-through queue length, um, which we increased in response to Beta's comments, and in doing that, we sort of further increased the landscaped area at this corner. Uh, so now, as we, as we discussed on site, this will all be granite curving. Um, we did maintain the twenty-four foot drive aisle into this main, main drive portion, but it is a pretty significantly sized landscaped area, um.
So, Nick, on this plan here, it looks like that those are parking spaces, that's now gonna be landscaped?
Yeah, do you mind if I?
Yeah, come. Right here?
Yep, yeah, exactly.
So that's gonna be landscaped, that, that'll be nice.
Yeah.
I think that'll help with traffic too, because if that was all open and that, it is kind of like the wild, wild west when you drive through there.
Yeah, and it's good too, 'cause, so there's that existing island to the south of that area, so it kind of carries that curving through.
Yeah, that, I think that'll look nice.
I believe Nick was, witnessed that last night a few times.
Yeah, that's, it's a tricky.
Were the pigeons there? Did the pigeons know you other guy taking away their spot?
Yeah, yeah, right.
Were they there? The pigeons?
No.
Literally, that is where, like, if you go there during the day, there's like eighty pigeons that just sit in that one. Somebody must bring food or something. I don't know, it's not me.
Um, one of the other things that we discussed on site that's sort of still an open item is there's a, a drain line that sort of runs, um, adjacent to our building east to west. Uh, it takes a, a pretty, the catch basin takes a pretty significant, um, area of runoff. And we did submit a CCTV report that, that scoped that line, and it, it showed that that line isn't in great condition. Um, and John has voiced some concerns about if that line, um, were to fail in the future, it would, it, it would just create sort of a pond at the rear of the site and could potentially even result in some runoff, um, overflowing onto, onto route one, so.
And then the skating rink in the window.
Yeah, 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 there you go. Um, so I think there's sort of a few options, I mean, we're totally open to suggestions, whether it's an item we work through, um, with DPW, or as I mentioned last night, we're, we're amenable to, um, re-CTV-ing the line after construction to see if any of the activities further disturb that line, um, or I know you mentioned even potentially just re, um, removing and, and replacing a portion of that.
It's right in the driveway on that end of the bank, and.
Yeah.
According to your site, uh, survey and, and your testing that you've done. It's on ledge, so if you have to go up there and start hole rimming with, with, with machines and and the hole rim doesn't work, you have to do some cap blasting or whatever may be required, um, I got a feeling that that line will not exist, that type of. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Yep.
To the board's attention, it is, it is private property, I want the owners of the property to come back to the board saying, we approved it, and we shouldn't have, um, we'll have our engineer from Beta comment on that. Um, it's protection for the board.
No, absolutely.
So, it, it is not in great shape, as I said, it, uh, it's beyond the, the metal structural support of that pipe to the backside with a lot of cracks. And if you start excavate pretty close to it and you're gonna run a machine over it, we can't guarantee, and I think at that time, best, whether it's one section, three sections, or five sections.
Yep.
You got the machine there to pull it out, um.
You don't have to go back and dig up.
Well, the other thing is, is the, uh, the catch basin that he speaks of is, is probably fifty-five, seventy-five feet from the edge of the bank.
Yeah, so.
There was a couple of, there's a couple of roll-offs on the land, but that's the only one for that whole corner. And it does drain backwards across the property, so it's on a high spot, so your height of that culvert can't be that deep at that point down the end.
Yeah, the drainage is, is relatively shallow out here, which I assume is.
It's, 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 it's of a concern.
Yep.
Um, and I'm sure if, if the engineer was here tonight, he would say the same thing.
Yeah.
So, I just don't want it to go unnoticed.
Yep. No, absolutely, and I think my question is more, um, I guess what, i- i- is it something that maybe we put as a condition in the decision, that it be addressed with DPW, or? I'm just thinking what's kind of the proper way to.
Definitely would, um, recommend that you meet with the DPW director or the engineer, I'm not sure. Um, has Brendan seen these plans, and, well, Larry was involved, did Larry mention?
We got a comment letter from Larry. Um, it might be back in like April at this point, and when we, when we responded to Beta's comments, we most of Larry's comments weren't necessarily plan-related, it was the CCTV work, which we, we did. Um, there was a handful of other, of other items, none of which really required significant plan changes, most of that stuff came from Beta's review, but we did prepare a common response letter in response to, to Larry's initial comments, and those were submitted to Brendan. I actually, I, I spoke with Brendan at the time that we, 'cause this was right after Larry left, so there were still kind of some moving parts. Um, I spoke with Brendan after we submitted, and he, he did mention that he would review everything. This was probably three or so months ago, I, we haven't, we haven't heard anything, um. I didn't know, John, I think, it sounds like you might have reached out to him regarding this pipe thing already and haven't heard that.
Waiting for Nancy to come back, actually.
Yeah.
Okay, so we could list it, we could maybe put it if it comes up to the, the.
Yeah, and I'm happy to, to work, um, directly with Brendan on, on finding.
There's, there's one other issue, um, that I brought to, to Nick's attention, is in the soil survey. It appears that we have a, nothing that exceeds state limits as far as contaminants. But if you take fifteen different contaminants and you put them all together in one, it far exceeds it, so I asked him if he would bring an LSU in, and hopefully, uh, Beta would have some comment on that. Um, just because of what's there.
Yeah, yeah, a- and, and as I, as I mentioned, um, yesterday, I, if, if anything, i- i- if there's any testing that's done at any point during construction, and those results show anything that's above the levels or allowable levels, they will one hundred percent be dealt with, you know, per local and state requirements. Um, Chase uses pretty reputable general contractors that we've worked with on a majority of these projects. Um, so they, they understand that, that that's a possibility and, and that it might come up during construction.
Okay.
So, Nick, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to have Beta.
Yeah, absolutely.
Come up and go through the, uh, the comments.
Yep.
Um, if, if he doesn't understand something, maybe you could help him work through them.
Hi, uh, my name is Gary James, I'm, uh, the senior engineer that was, uh, associated with, with the review. Uh, and we have gone through, I think, what, three reviews now?
Two, yeah.
Two, two or three reviews. Uh, pretty much, and it's gone through, uh, three different departments in, in Beta, we've done, uh, we did go to the LSPs in-house to be able to look at the issues associated with that, and also the traffic group did look at it. Traffic group has indicated that pretty much all of their comments and all of their questions have been answered by the traffic engineers that have done the analysis.
Okay.
And I know that, uh, they have also, uh, answered and responded to all of the issues that we raised relative to the stormwater issues, although I will agree with John. We have raised quite a few comments relative to that double catch basin on that far corner. It's pretty much it, that's, that's the only stormwater.
For that whole section.
For that whole section, yeah.
No, not for the whole property.
Not for the whole property.
Sort of west, or I'm sorry, east of this driveway, there's almost kind of a ridge line at the center point of this driveway, it's actually, it's pretty apparent on site, and you can, it, it is a, a significant area that's directed towards that, that catch basin. So I, I think it's totally a, a valid concern to making sure that pipe is.
My theory is, most of the shops that are there are slab-on-grids, I think there's a six-inch curb height. Um, we got a good storm, one of those hundred-year storms that we get every other week, but we used to anyways. Um, we could potentially have a huge problem there. Not only with the flood here, but the overflow onto route one would be catastrophic.
Well, the only positive thing that I found was, when you look at MassMapper and you look at the LiDAR, the, uh, twenty-twenty-one USGS LiDAR, which is available on MassMapper, it appears that there's a limitation in terms of the amount of pawning that can actually take place at that, and then it'll jump, it'll jump a high point.
Somewhere right down in.
Yeah.
I will.
It will actually flow into the other mall.
Yep.
So there is a limitation in terms of, uh, what the overall depth can actually achieve at that, because when you look at the analysis and you look at how much rainfall and what type of runoff we can anticipate at that catch basin. That pipe going across, you're right, it flows uphill. You know, that's the low point, the ridge is actually on the high point, so it's gotta be.
Yep.
You know, my gut reaction is that they probably blasted that, that line all the way through.
That's what it appears.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause that's gotta be a blasted trench to be able to get that through. Understand this too, John, you're right, because they propose to connect to that.
They're tying into that?
Yes, they're tying into that.
I thought there was two catch basins, there's, appears to only be one.
No, there's only one.
Yep.
It's just a double grade.
Got a question, John.
Yep.
Um, that, that pipe that we're talking about, should, you know, should we have a problem with it? Is it route one, or is it gonna be the shopping mall down below? That would get, in other words, what's the slope of, of, of?
My, in my opinion, it'll be, it'll be the shopping mall down below.
And we get the flow?
It would get the flow, yes, it would, it would jump over the little bit of the ridge and flow to the, to the, yes. At least, that's what, that's what the LiDAR, that's what the topography from the LiDAR seems to indicate.
But there's a heavy snowstorm with a rain, rainfall up. It would flood, it would, it would.
I know, I know.
You're gonna block that runoff and.
Yeah, I know Baller indicated to us that they, they've not recorded any real issues down there to date, but I'm like, I, I.
But this is, this is an owner issue though.
It's an owner issue. Um, they're, they're, it's in their footprint of, of what they propose to do.
Right.
They're gonna tie into it, and something happens and contractor just backfills it, no one brought it to any attention, then people are gonna come back and say, the board didn't do their job, they should have made to do this and.
From that low point, going, going back up, what's, how much of an elevation are we talking about?
Probably about twelve, fifteen inches is what, is what the LiDAR seems to indicate.
Are you saying the pitch on the pipe?
I'm saying, yeah, the pitch on the pipe goes from the low point back to the high point.
Oh, it's, it's, I think it's a three-tenths of a percent.
Yeah, it's a relatively, uh.
It's almost flat.
Yeah, it's very flat, it's very flat. Yeah, the capacity on the eighteen inches, it, basically, it depends on the surcharge in the catch basin to be able to get the water rolling.
Is there any way to improve that?
Um, I, I think it would be a, a very significant undertaking, requiring.
Change?
Yeah, just because all of these drainage structures are, you know, associated with each other, um.
If it fails, it's gonna be significant anyway.
Mm-hmm. I mean, I would offer like, I, I think we'd be perfectly fine with even just replacing, we could just replace from the connection point all the way down to that catch basin, is that, is that something that?
Anything that's gonna help that corner, it just, as, as I said, we can't make you do it, but if there's a problem.
Right.
Yeah, no, I, I, honestly, I, I, I totally understand the concern.
Or either that, or, or DPW may say we can't have you tie into that line, you gotta take it somewhere else.
Mm-hmm.
So, right now you propose.
Prove it with that condition.
Well, it's even up to the DPW, 'cause it's actually private property.
Private.
But if it affects route one on an overflow, then it becomes our problem, becomes the, the state problem, and they'll come back at us, so.
Yeah.
Anything that we can do.
Same owner, I've talked, as the mall?
It is not, no.
Okay, so I was gonna say, that, and that would be an issue between the two owners, because you're dumping, now you're dumping your water onto our property, that would be between them, so.
Yes.
I don't really, yeah.
The other issue that we did raise was the, the, the issue that you brought up, John, relative to the, uh, hazardous, the, uh, the hazardous waste of the material associated with that. If you look at the phase two investigation, part of the face, the recommendations of the phase two resti, uh, investigation, I'm sorry, was the fact that they recommended that they put either a vapor barrier in or a venting system. And when we went to our group, their recommendation was, put the vapor barrier in, put the piping in, don't necessarily activate the system, but at least have the piping beneath the building that allows you the ability that if all of a sudden you do see the vapors associated with it, or you do start seeing, uh, vapors where you are getting some hazardous waste issues, then the answer is you can, you can implement a ventilation system. Even, even, that would even prevent the issue or, or address the issue of, or even radon, so.
And they, they've offered to do that?
Yes, yes, that was part of the recommendation that came out of the phase two.
Okay.
Yes, we're, if, if, sorry to interrupt you.
Nope.
But it's the storage and the trucking of the material?
And the same thing, and the storage and the trucking was, was part of our recommendation was that they have an LSP on site, and that they document the overall, uh, where the destination of all of the material when they truck it offsite. Yeah, where, where's it going?
So the board, the board would need to know, the trucking company, the, the general, everything that's required.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, associated with any of hazard, hazardous material, just to know where it's, where, where it finally goes.
So, is there anything outstanding that wasn't addressed? It seemed like everything was pretty much addressed.
No, that's, that was pretty much it, those were the own, other than that, they implemented pretty much all the recommendations that, that we had, uh, given them relative to the overall site plan and the stormwater issues. Uh, they are correct. Uh, ledge based on the borings, about four to five feet, there was only one boring that actually made it to a depth of about thirteen feet. That was right in the middle of the building. Other than that, they were hitting refusals over around four or five feet. So, yeah, it's believable that, pretty much, uh.
Hold them to sagas.
Yeah, yeah, especially when you look at the backside of the stop and shop, and you look at that outcrop. Yeah, that's, that's, that's quite a, quite an escarpment there.
Yeah. If you look to the, would be the backside of the bank, before the, uh, the on-ramp there.
Yeah.
You got enough nice outcropping all the way that wraps up.
Well, there's actually a small outcropping even right.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, right, right there, yeah, it's, yeah. Which looks to be pretty hard granite, so you, you are right, if they have to develop a whole rim, it, they're gonna work.
Yeah, I'm curious how it's going at the.
There would be requirements, um, your general to seek permission before, if you have to, should have the blast.
Oh, absolutely, yep.
For the fire department, and we'd let the, uh, planning department know, we'd make that as one of our conditions.
Yep, certainly.
Um.
Yeah, I'm curious how it's going up at the, the Raising Cane site, I know they have similar ledge conditions.
And soil, I think they have the same soil too, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's some, very similar, so.
Looks like they're starting to build though.
Yeah, they've bought off-rim for the most part, I think.
Roger, do you have any questions, sir?
Other than that, Mr. Chairman, I'll hand it back to you.
I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just making sure everything that we've talked about here is, is in the order.
Yep.
On approval.
So.
That's correct.
Yeah, you get the response, you have a copy, you have a copy in your packet.
I have a copy of everything in the world. Just missing the constitution.
And as I, as I mentioned earlier, we, so, we did add those, those pavement markings and, and signage to the drive aisle. That plan hasn't officially been submitted to the board, so assuming there's, you know, any other comments or, or question we can incorporate into our plan, um, but we're more than happy to send a fully updated sort of final stamp set[1796.54] But we're more than happy to send a fully updated sort of final stamp set to Nancy. I mean, we can do it tomorrow, assuming there aren't any, any other changes that come that.
What do we need to do tonight?
We took a vote to see if we can get the.
To approve the site?
The site engineer that represents the board because of.
About the approval of the site plan, with the conditions that have been, you know, presented.
Stated here tonight, yep, and that they work with Brendan. Well, can't really do that.
Before any, before any permit is issued, we need to.
Just to confirm that.
We'll have to write up some, some conditions.
Yep.
Based on what we've discussed tonight in the site. And make sure that what you're proposing, and I think it is a good idea to change it. It just puts it to bed.
Yeah.
Is that pipe, especially if you get into the blasting and you get into heavy equipment.
Yeah, we can, so, yeah, when we issue our final plans, we can incorporate replacing that.
Once you open it up, you're going to see how bad it.
Yeah, I mean, you're not, the CCTV speaks for itself. It's, it's not great, so.
How many feet is that to the storm drain that you'd have to go?
So, I think the total run is, I want to say it's between 300 and 400 feet. So, I think the segment that we would be replacing would, would probably be about 200, just eyeballing it, something like that.
Is it going to cut into, into it, and they have to add a T?
So, we're actually, yeah, we're proposing a, a manhole. It's a doghouse manhole that sort of sits on the existing line and you, it's kind of built around the existing pipe. So, it, it typically, aside from cutting a portion of the, of the pipe, it's usually not too disturbing to the existing pipe, but I think we can kind of cut it at the portion where we're proposing the new invert out of the structure to be, and just sort of replace that entire run east of that.
So, this time, unfortunately.
So, does the board have any other questions?
Anybody from the public?
One, one question that I do have is, I'd like to get a motion from the board to move forward and have, see if Beta would like to come on and represent the, the board of the town as we move forward with this project as a PPE.
To do peer review?
For a peer review.
So moved.
So moved. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Our motion? Nick will, there's normally a, a deposit. I'll have Nancy and Jeannie work on that.
Yep.
If you send a check in, then I think Beta will, will assign someone to come out. Whether it's once a week, when it's real heavy going, or twice a week, and then however it's going.
I'm not entirely sure what Chase's anticipated construction schedule looks like at this point.
Okay.
If I had to guess, I, I think it would be an early spring start. But we're happy to pay that deposit now, just to kind of get it out of the way. I guess the only, sort of the last question I would have for you folks is, knowing that it's sort of a, a unique time where you don't have a planner right now, regarding the decision, who, who sort of will be putting that together?
For, for, with the conditions?
Yeah, just the decision that, that, you know, we can reach out to.
Probably special counsel.
Okay.
Yeah, just to make sure.
Just signage would be involved in that and all the, all the other good stuff.
Okay.
Have you ever submitted anything for signage?
So, typically, our office doesn't handle a sign permitting.
Okay.
But there will, I, I know we submitted a sign package as part of our.
I thought so.
Original submission.
Yeah.
But I don't think any sign permit applications have been filed.
Before any sign is, is.
Yep, yeah. Yeah, they have a, Chase typically uses a permit expediter that handles signage, building permit, those, those types of things.
It is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak in favor or against? Please count the podium. Hearing done. That's the wish of the board?
So, Mr. Chair, you need a motion to close the public hearing and then vote the site plan review?
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three to zero.
And then I would make a motion to approve this site plan review permit?
Do you want to do that before we get to conditions?
Do you want to re, reiterate the conditions? I thought you said, already said the conditions that we had talked about.
Okay.
Go ahead. Bob, you make the motion, because I know you're going to make me re-say it 10 times anyway, so.
No, I'm, I'm.
Go ahead, make your motion.
Site name and you make a motion?
To approve the plan as presented with the conditions.
Thank you.
That have been outlined by, who's that company?
Beta.
Beta.
With the conditions as outlined by Beta to be met prior to the construction of the, prior to the construction of the facility, the building.
Make it a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero.
Thank you.
You're all set, sir.
Appreciate all your help through the, through the process.
Thank you guys for being so thorough and working so well together. It's refreshing.
What time is it?
What pass take?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Good night.
Aye.
Good night, Houston.
Have a good night.
Thanks.